I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees' regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, October 9th, 2019. The time is 6:30. Please pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please note the roll.
Noted.
Approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the following amendments: deletion of item 11A and 11E.
Could you say what those are, Joe, just for...
11A, the offer to purchase Washington Street parcel and E the inspector's educational expense.
Support. Moved and supported. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's move on to the approval, the possible approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. Moved and supported by Curtis. We'll use him. Roll call.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Trustee Nichols.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Public comment on items not on the agenda. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Move on to the first reading of zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinance 67A.019, amendments to section 2.2, section 3.5, and article 5. Any questions from the board? Yes.
Jack, these just basically mirror state law, correct?
Yes.
That's kind of what I thought. State is changing them to mirror...
Uh, zoning laws.
Yes. Okay.
You have any comments, Curtis?
At this time, I do not.
I move to set a second reading and possible adoption of amendments to section 2.2, section 3.5, and article 5, the Charter Township of Oxford zoning ordinance 67A, to be considered at the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees' November 13th, 2019, regular meeting.
So, roll call. We'll do a roll call.
You need a second and a motion.
Second.
Hi, Curtis. Yes.
The motion needs to change to November 20th. Our meeting will be on the 20th next month.
Because of hunting.
Oh, you're right. November 20th.
amend my motion of support.
Where we changed there.
I'm glad we changed it, too. Uh, let's do a roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Trustee Dar.
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Yes.
And trustee Nichols.
Yes.
On to the fire department. You guys got anything? Nothing, no.
Sharp Engineering.
Do I have? You, you got anything?
We have lighter donuts. I'll...
One thing I would, I would like to say is, you know, one of our people are off sick. It's the assistant chief. Just put him in your prayers and hope for a speedy recovery for him. Yes, Curtis?
I'll take my guess. We'll keep him in his prayer, in our prayers.
Uh, Sharp Engineering report? A new agenda item, second month?
Second month. Just going to keep you guys updated on what's going on.
And don't get yacky. Don't, don't start rambling.
No. I only had to do it one time because of the pub, because of the public hearing. You know, you want, you wanted me to talk. This one is, uh, just keep you updated and probably the public with regards to M24. We had a utilities meeting down at MDOT offices on the, on the third, and although everybody's aware that the main portion of construction is going to begin in March, AT&amp;T, Consumers Energy, and DTE have relocations to do, and so they're going to be, starting with lane closures within the next two weeks. So, there'll be periodic lane closures. It won't go through the whole winter or anything like that, but there are going to be some utilities that need to be relocated, some poles that need to come down, so forth, so there are going to be some intermediate lane closures.
Tell me they're going to do this at night.
I could tell you that, but that's not, that wouldn't be accurate. So, just to give everybody a heads up, it's, it's starting to come already. Let's see, a couple of other items. The crossroads water main has finally installed, operational. We, basically that leaves us with one leg of the loop left to complete to get it back out to M24, and I believe that you're going to be discussing that later on tonight. So, that will complete our loop over on the east side, down through the middle school, down through crossroads, down Drainer Road, and back out to M24. Tullamore, the development that we put this water main in for, I mean, along with just the benefit of the township, that project has started, so if you drive down Drainer Road, in addition to the devastation that the road commission has created down there, with regards to their ditching and tree removals and everything else.
That's good work, though.
That property is, it is, it is. It just looks a lot different when you drive down there. And so, that project is underway. That's going to be, I believe it's 49 units, 49 single-family homes. And then we just received a preliminary site plan for another one, which is the last phase of Waterstone, that's known as West Lake, just here north on Dunlap Road. They'll be coming to you because it's going to be a condominium with master deeds and bylaws that the township board has to approve, so...
How many units?
That one, Joe, I believe is 70. 70, 70 homes there, so that's going to be, that'll be a little tricky one. I wish you could get them to pave Dunlap Road there because their entrance is still going to be on dirt, but...
I put a, I put a hint into the developer today and he laughed, laughed at my face.
See what we can do, but we will get your safety path in almost up to West Bay Shore, Joe. They'll be responsible to put that in, so...
But I add that the Drainer Road, on East Drainer Road, they've done all the devastation, but it was for good reason, for drainage and disimprovements. They've started to put down the gravel that the township bought, and hopefully in the next few days, everything will be back to somewhat normal as far as the road.
And I believe that as, that right now, they're up on Davison Lake Road as well, doing the same type of thing, uh, doing some...
That's our second phase.
Clearing and ditching and things up there, so... All right, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thanks, Jim.
All right, thanks.
Let's move on to unfinished business, liability insurance proposals. I'm going to turn to the insurance person. I told him today when I was, when I was reading the, the agenda items that I can't get into that insurance. I just, I turned to mush, so I'm, I'm relying on my main man here.
All right.
Who's going to make it simple for all of us, and hopefully the people out here.
Okay, to refresh the board's memory, back in May, we were tasked with an assignment to go out and get some insurance proposal bids for liability insurance. I did contact five companies. Three did respond, and those people are in the audience tonight. Tim McClory from the MMRMA, Cindy White, who's representing Melissa Skinsel from MRM, John Johnson from Nickel and Saft, and our current agent, Dustin Dreback and Calvin Decker from the Decker Agency. So, they provided the proposals that I put in the packet. I put in the relevant, relevant information I thought could give you an idea of the coverages that we have in here, and there is, the prices that come back, we'll start there. This, the prices, if you look here on the left side, the premium base premiums, Nickel and Saft is 59,065, Decker is 61,217. That's $400 higher because our volunteer coverage is $400, and that's why I added that in there. MRM is 65,497, and MMRMA is 79,330. So, each company has a different offering of benefit that they provide different from the other ones. But when you, when you look at the, the coverages that, that are in there for the cost, it appears that our current carrier has the most coverages for the, for the price that we're paying. But what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, if the companies that are here, they've taken their time to put the effort into this, if they'd like to approach the board and give a little bit of a brief overview.
I will, I will do that. If I could ask a quick question? These amounts, these 60, 61, and 66, are these apples to apples?
Relatively close. Relatively close, because if you look, look in your packet, it's there.
Do I have to?
You don't have to, but, um, the coverages, the first one's MMRMA.
Mm-hmm.
And here, they're right there on the screen, 79,330. They have, they have a very nice program to offer. They do give like a dividend refund policy, but it's based upon years of, in the program that the, it's like a sliding scales, I understand it, that you, the more, the longer you're in it, the, the more money would come back to you.
Maybe we should just let them say that.
I would, I mean, they're in, they're in this field more than I am. They know their product...
I hate to put you on the spot. I can't believe you did all this work, and, but believe me, he's got spreadsheets. I know, I don't know if you know this man. He's got spreadsheets.
But I, I appreciate that you welded down so nicely for us in this spreadsheet.
Yeah, I have another one that...
I almost kissed him today.
(laughing). I can, I can bring up a spreadsheet, but I, I'd like to hold that back unless we need it.
Who would you like to go first?
Um, let's just start from the top with, um...
I have two questions. Okay. Anybody, you got questions?
I do.
Throw something at me.
All right. Do these other agencies have dividend return?
As far as I know, only two of the four do. That would be our current carrier and MMRMA. They, they all...
Nickel and Saft is not providing.
Okay.
That is reflected in our price currently.
Okay. What is the percentage of dividend?
The percentage of dividend, over the course of, for, for our current carrier, they've returned, I believe over the last five years, about $11,000 of the amount. Not a big amount, but it's still something that they're choosing to, to refund money, money back to their clients.
Thank you.
Jack, did you have some?
Yeah, just one. Uh, you know, we're going to be assuming some liability from assets that are going to be turned over to the county. Is that included in this bid, or is that something we have to talk about after the assumption of those properties?
Probably have to talk to it after, but that's something that, if it's explained to them, they're, if they're here, that they probably could answer that real quick.
Thank you.
Do you want to tell them what to consider? Jack, you want to try that?
Well, Oakland County has, is holding assets, a lot of them are easements, some are, are vacant land parcels that we have, we will be assuming the liability for people walking on it, people going on those. It's not a lot of property, but it's still the fact that there will be liability.
And different infrastructure.
Assume, pardon me?
And infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, there are infrastructures involved, so that's, I, I don't know if that was presented to all of you, but it's going to be something to consider. And we don't have a list of total assets yet. We have looked at some of them, but we can't clearly define them as to what building or what plant, or what easement, or what piece of property, so...
It's coming up. So, who would you like to start?
Um, let's start with MMRMA.
Would you like to come up and state your name and...
Sure. My name is Tim McClory, and I'm with the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. MMRMA is a pioneer in self-insurance for governmental entities about, about 40 years ago. This will be, next year will be our 40th anniversary. We started in 1980. Back in, in 1980, commercial insurance carriers bailed on municipalities. A few years after that, Time Magazine had a front, the, their, the cover of the Time Magazine was, "Sorry, America, your insurance has been canceled." That was mostly an article towards governmental entities who lost their insurance due to the fact that the insurance market didn't have the capacity to, to handle the liability associated with police officers and law enforcement and, and everything that goes along with the, with the municipal exposures. MMRMA was founded back in 1980 out of necessity. I think we've survived, we started out with three members. One was a township, one was a city, and another was a county. The city was in the UP, the township was in the Detroit area, and the, and the county was Livingston. It was just down the road from here. We've grown since. Our philosophy is a little bit different. We want to be your risk management partner first. We want to help you not have the losses, and by doing so, we collect premium, that premium, if we're not paying it out, it collects interest income, and then we have the ability to turn around and, and bring assets back to our, to our members. What Curtis was referring to is the dividend program is one of our, one of our flagships for, for our members is, it's called our net asset distribution. We are not a commercial insurance company, so we're not sending money off to shareholders in the form of dividend checks. We give money back to our members, who are basically our shareholders. So, since 2006, we've given back $307 million back to our members in the form of net asset distribution. Um, I heard the question, what's the percentage of how much you get back in a dividend? It's hard for me to say. As a member, if you started with MMRMA, you start accumulating in year one, you'd get your first net asset distribution after year two. That's one way that we give money back. The other way, we give money back, which is probably more hand-in-hand with our risk management approach, is our risk avoidance program. Each year, we give back 1.75 million back to our members in grant monies, and those grants can go from anywhere, from law enforcement. There's a lot of law enforcement-related grants, but there's also grants for fire and EMS. There's a lot of education grants for staff in command, and a lot of your zoning, zoning administrator type, type of certifications we help pay for. Those grants were, started out as ideas from our members, and we have a list of about 48 standard grants. One of our most popular grants is our, our security grants for security cameras. We give our members up to $50,000 every 10 years to, to, you know, put security measures in place to help, to help secure and/or mitigate any risks associated with, with, you know, security lighting and cameras, that kind of thing, key code entry systems, that kind of stuff. Our coverage, liability coverage is an all-risk document. It covers, in other words, it's covered unless it's specifically excluded, so we're, we're real user-friendly. Our coverage document is like this thick, so one of the advantages that we have is we have one liability document. We don't have a whole bunch of different liability documents. I think you're probably used to a general liability, employment practices liability, you know, auto liability, and so on and so forth. We have one liability document that covers, that covers all liability, including your errors and omissions and professional liability, so... The philosophy is just a tad bit different than the commercial insurance, and we'd love to, at this point, I'd open up to any questions. You guys have had a chance to review the presentation or the proposal that I gave. Leave it up to you guys.
Is there any questions?
I'll just make a comment. The Palladium Trail does have MMRMA for their coverage, and I don't know how long they've been with them, but their return is about 50% of their premium. It's a small premium, but still it's a, just backing up...
That's pretty indicative. I mean, like, first year, and I kind of went over these with Curtis in our meeting, I tried to pick out some, some of the, the new members that we wrote. They were, you know, first year, they're getting 7% to 10%. Next year, you know, somewhere between, you know, 13 to 18%, and it grows. Again, the most, the most, the biggest multiplier in that is how long you've been a member, because, you know, we have members that have been with our organizations from the very beginning, so they've had a lot more to do with the success than somebody that joins news. It's understandable that you, there wouldn't be a flat percentage across the board, so... But, anyway.
Yeah, Joe. Reading through the sheet, I'm, I'm concerned about the terrorism coverage. Unfortunately, we live in that type of an age.
Sure.
At least with you guys, it's, it's all included.
Yes.
The other ones seem like they have limits.
Pardon me?
The other vendors, like, have limits.
Yeah, our limits, our limits are pretty, are pretty, are pretty broad.
I mean, that's what I'd be concerned with.
Yeah, we do five, we do have a $5 million terrorism limit, which matches your liability. We do have an aggregate, and that's, that aggregate is $5 million on the terrorism. We don't, as you can see, we don't do a lot in aggregates, which is basically a limitation. So, in other words, if, for your liability on item number one, you'll see we have $5 million per car with no aggregates. You could have 500, $5 million losses. They'd all be taken care of. There's no, there's no limitation to that, so...
Any other questions? Thank you for keeping it somewhat short.
Yeah, I was, I was going to go on, I said, I don't want a terrorism insurance seminar.
I would have cut you off.
Yeah, that's okay. Appreciate that. If there are no other questions, I thank you for your time, and I want to thank Curtis and his staffer for all the effort they put into putting this together.
I do, too.
It's, it's, it's a lot of hard, it's a lot of hard work, and, and I can understand you wanting to kiss him, so...
(laughing).
Who would you like last?
Cindy White from MRM. She's representing Melissa Skinsel. Melissa wasn't able to make it, so Cindy is...
As I said, my name is Cindy White. Here with me tonight also is Jeff Gowan. He is, we're both agents representing MRM Agency, and Melissa couldn't make it tonight because her brother refused to change his destination wedding. He refused to reschedule where to attend this meeting, so, um, she's not happy that she couldn't be here, but nonetheless.
Thank you.
Um, please feel free to ask any questions as we go along, or if you have any right up front. I just want to take a little bit of time and talk about MRM Agency, what we bring, our experience, what we bring to the table, and what being insured with One Beacon Government Risks means to a municipality. MRM Agency has a combined, almost a combined experience of 50 years. We have specialization in workers' comp, insurance defense litigation, and certified risk managers for public entities. We offer personalized services to you, much like the other carriers do here, educational seminars that are tailored to your needs, trainings, presentations, that we can cover governmental immunity, cemetery liabilities, and everything in between to address all your department's needs. We like to be proactive, so we offer quarterly custom loss reviews, and we offer claim submission assistance, and I'm going to talk just a little bit about that later. We offer risk management services, and we believe that risk management is a collective, collaborative effort between the insured, MRM Agency, or your agent, and your carrier. So, One Beacon has a little bit of a different philosophy than some of the carriers here. They have a regional risk control that is available to you. We have online trainings. They are a phone call away. They will come to you if you need them to, as will MRM Agency. We can certainly provide risk control services. So, what we don't do is mandate that we visit with you on a periodic basis, and we're not going to make demands on you to, you know, take away from your time and your resources. Our function is not to tell you how to manage your entity, but to be here for you and help you as needed through the process. Part of being insured with One Beacon Government Risks includes a company that is located in North America that's been servicing public entities for over 50 years. Perks of the program are, we offer different training things, like EPLI portal, which is Employment Practices Liability. We have, that provides you with legal references, policies, trainings, legal updates, and legal support. They're phone call away as well. They're a law firm hired by One Beacon. At no cost to you, you can access that resource, and that portion is in your handout as well. Feel free to take a look at that. Claims handling, that's probably one of the biggest areas that we see there are issues in. Having a claim is a real test to your policy, so your policy is only as good as the way it responds to claims. One Beacon was recently named best in class in claims management, and I have a firsthand experience with dealing with the claims department with One Beacon. One of our insureds had approximately, during all the rain events that we had this year, it was extremely wet, and we had a potential of 1,000 claimants. Within 20 minutes of contacting, the insured contacting me, me contacting One Beacon Claims Department, we had the claims adjuster assigned, claims numbers assigned, and the process was extremely streamlined and efficient. I've never witnessed that type of a, a process before, so it was very, very easy and very user-friendly. And we do have a letter of recommendation from the entity, which is Brownstown Charter Township, in your packet as well, if you would like to contact them. Lastly, I would like to provide some highlights on our coverages that's, that are included with every policy. Sexual molestation and assault, and you're probably thinking, what does that have to do with, with us, but fire, police, parks, anybody that has anything to do with kids or in general the public, all you have to do is turn on the news today, the Catholic Church, the Boy Scouts, Me Too. So, it's a coverage that's built in, that's available to defend someone should they get accused of something like that. Also, one of the big highlights of our policy is defense costs are outside your liability limits. So, if you have $5 million in liability limits, you also have policy limits and defense costs. The defense costs are not going to come out of that $5 million that's set aside for a verdict or a consent judgment. And we also offer policy limits for zoning. So, if you have a $5 million limit, you have $5 million available for a zoning claim, and your defense costs are outside of that as well. So, these are only a few examples that illustrate the Benefit Rich Program that One Beacon Government Risks offers. If you have any questions, we'll be available to answer those. And on behalf of MRM Agency, we thank you for your time and consideration, and all the work that goes into bidding your, your insurance. We understand it's a cumbersome process, so thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Any questions from Melissa? Who would like to be next?
Uh, we'll have John Johnson come up from Nickel and Saft. John currently has the loss protection.
How are we this afternoon? I want to take the time to thank each and every one of you for being here and to go through this process. I know it is an extenuating process to do, but it is well worth it in the end to know that your coverage is in place when you need it. So, with Nickel and Saft, we've been around since 1929, under current management since 1966. It's a mom-and-pop shop, so you're working with family-friendly people. This being an agency, we had the ability to reach out to more than one carrier. We touched base with multiple entities, and we got quotes from two. What you're seeing is a quote from one. This quote is from Trident. This was the best price and the best coverage. So, with Trident's policy, they provide you with the liability limits of $5 million, but the difference between our liability is each part for the general liability, the public officials, employment practices, so on and so forth. These are all separate checkbooks. So, if you have a claim from a general liability, it doesn't erode or take away from any money out of the public official's pile. So, you have to look at each one of these as a specific checkbook itself. We have been a part of the MTA, Michigan Township Association, for 10 or 15 years that I can remember. We are a keystone provider, so that means the packet that you receive each year, you'll see a write-up in there from us stating that we donate to them and make sure that you can go to all the events and participate in those. The annual premium for this is $60,317. That is including your terrorism coverage. Now, terrorism works directly based upon the underwriter. They send somebody out here, they have a look at it, they make sure that it is a terrorism claim, and they go from there to protect it. We have put bonds in place for each one of these positions. Treasurer, deputy treasurer, clerk, deputy clerk. This is for state statute, so it's what we're doing, our due diligence, to make sure you're protected. We've also included constable, which is on our due diligence for the township itself. Your loss or claims made history is really, really good, I have to say. We don't find many communities that have a history like yours, so thumbs up there. We protect multiple entities in this area. Actually, your neighbor next door, the Village of Oxford, they are a member in our program and protected with Trident as well. So, unique coverages with Trident is their inverse condemnation. This is particularly unique because it protects not only partial taking, but it protects complete ownership taking. So, with all these new enhancements coming along for '24, and we're doing the property and we're, we're opening up the roads, this inverse condemnation is going to protect and make sure that if somebody were to come back and say, hey, you didn't pay us, or you've taken our land more than three times, and you're not doing this rightfully, well, you have protection for that. We also would like to touch on a little bit of your property that we've listed in the actual scheduled items. actual scheduled items. We've enhanced some of these coverages because we didn't feel as though the property replacement cost values are up to their standards, so we've increased them. These two properties being the office that we're in currently, we increased it about $1.2 million, and the PR admin office, we increased it about $1 million. Now, this is just for Trident's well-being. It's to put ease in their mind. What we'd like to do, excuse me, is we'd like to come in and actually provide you with appraisals. Now, these appraisals are free of charge to the township. We'll eat all that value or all that cost, and nothing, no bills or anything, go towards you after. Um, it's probably about a $10,000, $15,000 added bonus. We have earthquake coverage, and we have flood coverage. And to protect all of the township, you have any board members, elected or appointed officials, any employees, and any volunteers are all covered within this policy. Now particularly, I want to touch on the ZBA Board. We have grants available to any members on the ZBA Board to participate in a Michigan State education course. This is free of charge to you. We have created specific seminars. One of the seminars that we created previously, uh, we made a connection with a lady. Her name was Linda Davis Kirksey. She's a grant writer. She's helped with multiple counties, Macomb County, Wayne County, Oakland County, and getting grants taken care of for them. Uh, so she's been a part of one of our seminars, and we can do anything tailored particularly to what you have an interest in. So if you have any questions, I don't want to bore you about the specifics in our policy too much, but I'm going to be here all afternoon, and I'd love to take them.
I have a quick question. It's probably a silly question. When you say there's a $5 million coverage on a certain aspect, how am I supposed to know whether it's, if I've got a $3 million claim here and a $3 million claim here, am I going to have to kick in a million?
No, sir.
Or is it per event?
So this is particular to the actual line items. The line items that I was speaking about is your liabilities. You have general liability, you have public officials liability, employment practice liability, and commercial automobile liability. So you have to look at each one of those four as a particular checkbook. So something that erodes your general liability per se, someone's cutting the grass out there and dings a car, and that takes out of your general liability. That won't affect a pocketbook for your public officials liability. Per se, if somebody comes back and they have an issue with something that you've set up here, and they're putting a claim in for that, it's not going to erode the general liability pocket. It's just a different checkbook, per se.
So it's not per occurrence?
It is per occurrence. We have no claims made in here other than the data compromise and cyber liability. So everything is per incident, per occurrence, but each one of them are separate checkbooks. So it goes on to the date that it occurs, and we are notified about it.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next would be Dustin Drebeck, Dustin Drebeck from our current carrier, the Decor Agency.
Hi, everybody. As Curtis pointed out, my, my name is Dustin Drebeck. I'm from the Decor Agency. We took over when we purchased the John Gendolphy Agency about a year ago, um, and we got heavily involved in your guys' operations about six, seven months ago. Since then, it's been a complete 360-degree turnaround in terms of response, um, customer service, and, and just overall, um, quality that we're returning back to the township. Um, you know, the other competitors that we have out today, um, you know, I, I can appreciate what they had to say, but, um, with confidence, you know, I, I say that what you had, what you will have, and, and what you've had for the past 34 years has been quality coverage. It, uh, unlimited aggregate, um, you know, John was pointing out that, you know, you have public officials, you have automobile, you have general liability, and we've got an unlimited $5 million aggregate. As Tim pointed out, uh, MRM comes with a, uh, unlimited aggregate as well, and there's not too many people out there that do that. It's pretty limited in terms of what policies have it and what ones don't. Um, other competitors use umbrellas or excess liabilities to try and make up for, um, the coverages that you're already in. They use things like high deductibles to mask, uh, pricing. You know, you'll see that, you saw the pricing as Mr. Curtis put the, as Curtis put that up there. Um, you know, it's, it's close, and I understand that, but what you see on there is the entire package for the year. We don't nickel and dime you. We don't fool around. I'm here whenever I've been needed. Joe, we processed that bridge claim quicker than quick. It's a completely different agency that you're dealing with now. We can, uh, plan on continuing that relationship with you. I've appreciated going through this process and working with Curtis, um, and I appreciate you guys allowing us the opportunity to speak with you today. You guys have any questions about your, your current policy limits, um, pricing, dividend program, grant program, things like that?
Any questions, guys? I, I guess I've got a question for the board.
I, I would like to point something out, though.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Curtis, the, the liabilities that you're potentially going to be inheriting will be in no way, shape, or form, a, a problem for us to handle. Um, as you absorb utilities or you absorb properties, we will have the liability coverage in place for you. If you should happen to take on a building or a structure, Mr. Wright would call me. It would take, I don't know, five minutes, 10 minutes, I'd return the, the documents back to you needed, and you would be all set. What, what you do or how you do it, when you do it, it's easy to take care of.
Okay, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Are we going to do a inventory and a current evaluation of our assets that are currently insured through the town, with the town?
Yeah, what, what you have, um, so again, as, as we've, have we, as we've transitioned, um, and, and taking over, um, the agencies, I mean, the entities that we've inherited, which are about 92 or 93 of them, um, we do provide appraisal services. Um, you know, it's, it's a topic of conversation that I don't know how you necessarily start because it is a process, you know? John pointed it out, I mean, it's, it's, it's a process. It's, it's not something that you just do overnight. You're, you're, you're a larger entity with, you know, larger buildings, larger liabilities, so you want to put your eyes on everything. So, um, with us, I mean, it would be actually a very streamlined process that could be completed over a couple of days, and then, you know, as you said, we, we return, um, picturized clean reports so that what we call, uh, basically a township bible of how you exist, and then whatever recommendations we would like to provide to you, it would be your opportunity to decide where you'd like to go from there, so.
Okay, because in, in what we have put in our ground and our systems this year has been a couple million dollars in our water lines, in our treatment plants, and, and pump and wellhouses and things like that, so I don't know if they're all current?
Well, they're, 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 no, they're, they're, they're good right now. The, the thing that you want to think about, though, is, um, you know, we, in your current package that you've had, and you have a, an extremely large blanket. So in the instance that, you know, we have issues, we have a, a very large blanket to take care of, um, your properties, and, and I want to point something out. One thing that we've been planning for coming up in 2020, and, and this is, this is, uh, I'd rather plan for it than be short, is, is tariffs and how they're affecting things. We're already starting to see the dramatic effect on fire trucks, on what they cost versus, you know, when they're delivered. Then it's, and it's getting to be a little ridiculous, and, and to tell you the truth, that is going to start trickling down. You're going to start seeing it in two-by-four, you're going to start seeing it in concrete roofing, things like that. So we do, uh, stay abreast of, you know, where you guys are at, and then where we'd like to, you know, progressively get you to the future with your all approval. Um, this isn't something that we just thrust upon you, and you say, well, you have to. Um, we give you the options, the opportunity, and then, of course, you know, our expertise.
Thank you.
Sir.
Does your, um, policy for, um, somebody breaking into the computer system, for example?
Right.
Destroying data?
Right.
Is that covered?
Well, that, that, that's a cyber package.
Right.
And, and a cyber package, so here's, here's what I want you to think about when it comes to cyber, okay? Cyber is in, been a, well, I'll be flat out with you. A lot of insurance agents sell it on fear, and we don't. Uh, cyber is something that will be almost in everybody's package or wheelhouse in the next five years, okay? But I don't want you to think that, you know, if you don't have it, then, you know, stuff's going to go bad. The program that we currently have you in to, you know, take care of your, um, records rebuilding, all of your, your software, any, anything that gets ruined in your servers, your TVs, all the way down to your tabs, we have that coverage allotted for you, and then you have a very robust IT contractor that is, is paid a hefty sum to take care of things like that. So us coupled with that team, if you get something that happens, we get you up and running on your secondary system. We replace everything that they attempted to blow up, and then we move on from the scenario.
Is that part of this package?
Yeah, you already have that stuff in there.
Covered?
Yep.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
If there's no more questions, I have a question for the board. Do you, would you like to make a motion tonight, or would you like to put it off for a month? And if you have any questions, you can go into the clerk's office, get your questions answered, and we can do it again next month.
When does our policy expire?
Uh, expires in April, sir.
Oh, we have time.
April 2020.
I'm just, we can do it, we can either vote on it tonight or put it off with, uh, any questions being directed to Curtis, and if he can't answer them, we can get the answer for you.
I, I would wait. Yeah, since we have the time, I have no problem waiting either.
There's two waits. I'll wait.
Why are we doing this so soon if it doesn't, if we go until April? Why are we?
Well, that was board direction, the board, board direction, board direction.
Okay.
Uh, one thing I could point out is, is my numbers will always stay sable. From here, April, May, it's always something to consider because things do change as time moves on, so.
All right, well, I can go either way. I, if they, everybody wants to wait, that's fine, but I, I feel confident that we've had this information since Friday, and I've looked it over, but if, if everybody wants to wait, that's fine.
Anybody want to wait?
Yeah.
I don't want to.
There's, uh, four waits.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table the liability insurance proposals till November 20th, 2019 Township Board Meeting.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
False.
Curtis, I'd like to thank you on behalf of the board to have you sit down with all these folks and compile all this stuff. I know it's, I'm glad I didn't have to do it.
I think a thanks goes to the people that are interested in getting Asher Township as a client. You know, they put a lot of time into putting the stuff together.
I'd like to thank you all, too.
Yeah, getting, getting it to us. I mean, Decor Agency, of course, is on board already, but, you know, John Johnson, Tim McFlory, Cindy White on behalf of the Minister's Council, that's a lot of work on your end, too, so I appreciate it on my end.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, we'll move on. You guys are free to go unless you want to sit around and listen.
You don't.
Okay, I'd do the same thing. That's scary. You going to stick around? Okay, let's move on to Legacy Entertainment LLC. Uh, I have a piece of paper here. I'm, I'm going to, what the hell did I do with it? Did I give it away?
Good evening, everyone.
I asked today for our zoning official to put together a memo on some outstanding issues at the Legacy Center. This, this is only going to be for zoning. Uh, Jim may have some more for his portion, but I'm going to read it, and maybe I'll give you time to, to answer the question. The dumpster enclosure, please reference CWA memo dated nine, excuse me, eight, nine, 18. The new location of the dumpster was approved in July of 2018. However, the amended site landscape plan was denied August 2018 based on the lack of detail about the enclosure material. Jennifer Geir received written denial and voicemail notifying her that the enclosure was denied on August 10th, 2019. The status, the additional date, details have not been submitted to date. Now, I have seen, there's pictures, uh, of the enclosure, and there seems to be some wood sticking up. I'm hoping you're not going to build this out of wood because, uh, the enclosed material should be architecturally compatible with the principal building of the property per section 6.2 blah, blah, blah of the ordinance. Masonry is required.
Okay, um, I'm going to apologize to all you guys in, in advance for this. Uh, Jen has no longer, is no longer with our, uh, company as of, I think it was July.
Yep.
Um, so that's actually the first that I'm, I'm hearing of that.
I'm tired of the excuses.
I, I understand.
I don't want to hear no more excuses.
I, I understand. Um, I'm stepping into this role, and I have to tell you guys, it's been, uh, a lot of fun in a kind of sarcastic manner. Um, I'm here to, on behalf of Christian, to get things done. It's the first that I, I heard of that. However, there's not a wall, there's not a wall, and I am...
There's a packet for you, you can have that.
You can have that packet. Uh, let's answer this.
Yes.
The enclosure, according to some of my records, which is part of our packet, you have until October 31st to, to finish this enclosure.
Yes.
Also, we'll all wait for the next one.
Okay.
Is it going to be finished?
To my knowledge, yes. We, this is what we are shooting for to do. There's things I can't...
Again, I don't want to hear any excuses. I'll, you know, November 1st.
I understand.
Or else I'll be your worst nightmare.
This whole thing...
I don't mean that. I mean, I'm, I've been going through this for three years.
I understand.
This board has, the neighbors have, everybody has. I don't want to hear any more excuses.
I understand. I, I would like to point out, though, just real briefly, um, I am a, a new face, and I am, I know you don't care that I am a new face, but I am a new face, and since I've been coming to these meetings, I've been trying to be very punctual with them. We have gotten a decent amount of work done in that time period.
So the answer is, you're going to have this done by the 31st.
So the answer is, I'm going to do everything in my power.
Let's go to number two.
Done by the 31st.
Dumpster and grease trap in the north parking lot. Dumpster both in the truck wall and in the parking area, and grease traps have never been approved as part of the site plan. Status, if the property owner would like to have them on, on, you know, the side of the building, the site plan can be amended administratively by submitting a revised site plan that includes enclosure locations and materials. What do you plan on doing with those?
Uh, absolutely.
Absolutely what?
Uh, thank you for the, the information on this as well. Like I said, I'm walking into this very blind.
Don't want to hear it.
I understand that.
You got, you got, you got some stuff on, on the site plan.
I was looking for a little more work to do.
Are you going to call the dumpster people and have it removed?
The dumpster people will be called, and we'll have that removed, uh, as well as the grease trap, and then we'll go through the proper channels to make sure that we have come to agree.
Like you said, you can have them, but you got to go through the process.
Yeah, but we'll go through the proper channels to make sure that we're in a nice spot.
Let's go to three. Safety path. It's required as part of the site plan approval. Uh, I can see where the construction of the path has begun, and also you have until October 31st to complete this.
I don't feel well. I have to excuse myself.
Not a problem, Patty.
Thank you.
You can go right outside the door.
I got it. Thank you.
Hope you feel better.
Hope you feel better, Patty. Um, the safety path, again, is supposed to be finished by your estimates, or the reason we gave you $33,000 to complete this stuff was October 31st.
Yes.
Can we expect the safety path to be?
I fully expect that to be completed.
Let's do landscaping.
Okay.
An overall site landscaping plan was submitted and approved as part of the final site plan approval. Status, request for the final landscape approval has not been made. We're aware that the, of the need to adjust the location of some items to accommodate the safety path, however, the buffering, landscape, and interior landscaping proposed for the south parking lot has not begun.
Okay.
Do we have an answer for that?
So north end landscaping is completed, we're moving on to the south end of landscaping.
There's a lot of dead trees there. A lot of them are dead. I drive by it every morning when I go to CrossFit. A lot of those little trees are dead. By the, by the dumpster enclosure there?
Just, just note that they're dead, but we...
Unless they're supposed to be brown.
We have an arborist on them, but I, they're red, they're, they're choke...
You have this.
They're chokeberry trees, and they're supposed to have a dark brown reddish, um, leaf on them, not a, a horticulturist, but...
Well, now you're on notice to take care of the dead trees if they're dead.
Will noted.
And, uh, let's do the window sign.
Yes, so I...
Hold on.
Okay.
I want to read this. It's going to be on the record. The window sign, the signage covering the window at Freedom Kitchen was denied. Hmm. It is not permitted based on the total building signage permitted through the variance approved by the... approved by the ZBA on 10/9/2017. What do we plan on doing with the sign?
So I, I do have a question and this isn't all honest, wholehearted question.
If it's a zoning question, I'm not gonna answer it because I don't wanna give you the wrong answer.
Likely not a zoning question. It may be, um, so as landlords, are we responsible to the tenants on what they do per?
I'm gonna make you responsible.
Well, I, I can understand. I'm just asking-
Yes.
The answer is yes.
Is the answer yes? The answer is yes.
You can't let it have to be a free for all.
Well, no, I, I, I understand.
You can't let you run it out and have a strip plot.
I understand. With, without the, without the ability to like legally find and that kinda thing, it's not in our, our contract. Would we be able to obtain a letter from you stating so that we can hand it to the-
If that sign is there tomorrow, I'll give you more than a letter.
You just have to refer to the minutes from, from the zoning board of appeals.
They're pretty-
Uh, from 10/19.
Bill.
10/9/17.
Better way of putting this is, Bill, is that someone came in to get a variance for the sign and it was denied and they put it up anyway. So it's in violation of the ordinance. That's what you're saying.
Okay.
So it's gotta come down.
Okay.
Or, you know, if you wanna get the lawyers involved after a couple of warnings, we can do that.
Okay. I, I would, we're fully gonna support it. I have to go to the tenants and explain this, this to them and have them take it down.
We'll be watching. Uh, you know, another thing, you're asking for a variance on, uh, when you can have the outdoor?
Uh, yes, yes.
I'm gonna tell you my opinion.
Okay.
You know, since I've been blabbing up here for so long, I'm not gonna grant anything until you get all this stuff done.
Okay, I see.
Nothing. It's only me. Any board done any questions on, yes?
I just wondered, do you have contractors lined up for this work right now?
Yes, yes, we do. Um, that would be in, I have a statement of work that I have in a packet for you guys. It's Axiom Construction, um, in response to-
It's in our packet.
Those questions, yes.
Right there.
I believe it's like the fourth item. Yes, fourth item.
Right there. That's where I got the 10/31, 10/31.
Yep. So those are not only estimated days on our end, those are also estimated days on, based on the contractors and in the scope of work, so.
What's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't care who's doing the contract work as long as the job gets done, it's completed.
I know it's-
They've had too many promises in the past and not kept them.
Well, I don't even wanna bring that up because I've been three years of doing this, so.
Jim, we know that you're new.
I understand.
You're just a new face on an old problem.
I, I understand.
You know, at least, at least I wanna give credit where credit's due. At least some work's been being done.
Hmm.
For many times, Christian, his folks would come and say, "We're gonna work on this." Next month, nothing was done. At least I saw something.
Absolutely. I understand. I'm very annoying to him.
My thing is, when I'd seen the dumpster enclosure, I, cause I wasn't that familiar with the site plan, I thought it was the one in the back. So I'd drive by that every day.
Hmm.
I'd talk to Bill, I'm like, "Where's the dumpster enclosure?" And check with our engineers, like, "That's not supposed to be there." I was like, "Oh," I kept waiting for a dumpster enclosure with the grease trap and all that.
Down at the southwest corner.
Yeah, they found out that's not even allowed. And said, "But the dumpster, the other one that passed by, it's in that well."
Hmm.
I assumed all the stuff was allowed. But then I realized, Jim says, "No, that's not allowed."
The same boat here as I'm reading through more and more of these, uh, these plans and everything.
Well, the tough thing with the restaurant, what are they gonna do? For those poor folks? You make them lug it all the way near McDonald's with that grease? They probably wanna amend that site plan.
That's not our problem, Joe. It's not our problem.
We'll be behind it to that one AM.
Don't care. Not our problem.
Got some big lugs in the kitchen.
What's the board's pleasure?
I move to deny the request to extend the site plan approval for Legacy Center up to May 15th, 2020.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? How about the outdoor dining?
I move to deny the request to extend the use of the outdoor patio for Legacy Entertainment LLC with no outdoor music or televisions, with no guarantee and, and not to go beyond 11:00 PM through December 31st, 2019.
I'll support it.
So you're denying to allow it through December, so?
Maybe if everything gets done next month, we can reconsider again.
That's exactly the way I feel. That, uh, I will not okay anything until all this stuff is done.
Maybe next month, everything's done, wait, if I have to.
Well, we should open it up.
So clarification?
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Turn under the gun, you get this stuff done.
Clarification, we are still good to continue to work in the manner which we are-
You're still continue, you just cannot, you cannot do anything on the outside of the building. I'm talking about on the patio.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, understood.
We're just trying to send a message.
I have you.
Loud and clear.
Got that loud and clear. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
You're gonna send that last?
Yes, Mary.
Yes.
Nope, you gotta come, you gotta come up here.
Certainly. I just wanted to see if you were accepting, uh, public comments on this issue.
Certainly.
Good evening, Mary Ann Caines, Stony Lake Village condos, uh, board president. I just wanted to clarify a few things that were stated this evening. It is the position of the Stony Lake Village condo board that the north side of the Legacy Center is incomplete and that it is supposed to extend out to the M dot easement. It is not complete at this time, in our opinion, and it does not extend out to the M dot easement as the planning commission final site plan approval, um, stipulated. What's taken place is they have put those ornate shrubbery along their drive on the north side of the building and those are the ones that Mr. Nutson, uh, states that has the brown colored leaves on it. Um, but that just simply outlines their drive. The, uh, 11 or so evergreen trees that they planted in prior year, uh, those that have all died have been removed and there's only about two or three that are still there that are alive. But the final site plan landscaping for the north side is supposed to be a border, a delineation from their parcel from the legacy, uh, from the, and, uh, bordering the Stony Lake Village condos so that patrons would know that they were trespassing on our property versus being on the legacy parcel, um, on the north side. And what is there currently is not a border, is not a delineation, it's just a few trees. Um, a patron of Legacy would not know that they were trespassing. Uh, they have used our, our area there to design posters and things of that and left materials, so folks really don't know that they're on, uh, someone else's property. And so I know with the safety path work going on that they might not be able to go all the way to the M dot easement until they've seen now that everything's poured and the infrastructure for that. But certainly we're coming to the end of the season, so whether this has to wait till spring, which will be year four for us, waiting for that landscaping. But I just wanted to make it clear that the north side of the building, um, in our opinion, um, is not complete and it's not out to the M dot, um, easement as it was supposed to be. Also, just to add about the dumpsters, we still, we call it the green eyed monster. We still see, and you have a photo of that huge, you know, green dumpster that's in the back of the, the 925 social area.
Did you get this?
And those other dumpsters are still on, you know, up, open to us. Now, they've done a lot of landscaping around the patio area, but they certainly haven't done the landscaping on the north side. Also, just to bring to your attention, I know you're the board of trustees, but the planning commission, uh, one of the commissioners had recommended, um, I guess it's been about a year or so, when you go on four years, Mr. Dunn, you and I know, it's hard to remember which year, what meeting, what was said. But there was some suggestion that, um, where the dumpsters are on the south side of the Legacy Center in the parking lot area, that's very visible from driving along Market Street. And there was the recommendation that that be screened so that patrons that going down, you know, Market Street wouldn't see all that dumpster area, so that area-
It'll be screened.
Yeah. Pardon?
It'll be screened.
Okay. So that's still-
It'll be in the enclosure.
Okay. So that's still, um-
Can I, can I just say one thing about, just to help you out here? Uh, years ago, we, when Myers went in, uh, the planner at that time didn't follow through on the planning commission, what they had recommended, like putting watering, to be, to be able to water out to the islands at McDonald's, all the plants died. Ever since that time, any planner that's worked for me told them, if they don't follow through with what the planning commission wants, I'm gonna fire them. That's their, that's their only job is to make sure they follow through on what the planning commission wants as far as the site plan. And so far, they've been doing it, so I assume that, uh, our planner will make sure-
They'll keep going.
Well, what we're, we're telling him is, until we get write off from Jim, the planner, nothing happens.
And currently, there is not a sprinkler system, in case Mr. Nutson, you don't know, there is not a sprinkler system on the north side and that's why all those beautiful evergreens died, which was, was very sad because that's a substantial investment and unfortunately, that's why they died. There is no sprinkler system there. And just, uh, the final comment I have is regards to signage, you know, we've had three extensions on the amount of square footage for signage on that building. Um, and then when the 925 social did that very large circular, um, signage, uh, by their rear entrance on the west side of the building, that, that was even beyond, um, the exceeding, uh, square footage of signage that they already had. So, um, that is, is one of those issues as well. But I thank you for your time and consideration, but I just wanted to clarify a few things from our perspective as a neighbor, how we, we see it versus what was said this evening in prior discussion.
All been noted.
Thank you very much.
Jim, have you got anything for the Legacy people?
I guess I would just ask if Jordan has my email. I believe he does. Well, I mean, I think that you addressed most of those comments on there, so as long as long as, you said, myself and Lauren are gonna be on them.
I think it was loud and clear.
Yep.
Let's move on. Uh, on to the Oxford Area Cable Commission ground lease agreement. This thing's been hanging around forever. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the ground lease agreement, uh, for the Oxford Cable Communications Commission and Park and Rec.
Second.
Well, is there, I'm gonna retract that. I'm gonna do one of these prepared ones.
Oh.
I move to approve the agreement for ground lease between the Charter Township of Oxford, Oxford Tark, Tarks, Parks and Recreation Commission, the Oxford Area Cable Commission, as presented and authorized Supervisor William Dunn to sign the agreement for the ground lease on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Let's move on to the 2020 sanitary sewer project on M24. Come on up here, Jim, in case somebody's got questions on this. Jack, you're the water and sewer chair, head at it.
As you're aware, M24 is scheduled for reconstruction in 2020. As part of that reconstruction, the Oxford Township, this board authorized funds to engineer, design and place an 18-inch sanitary sewer line within the M24 from Gateway Drive to Oakdale. Um, what we're asking for tonight is that we approve the allocation of $750,000 from the Oxford Township Sewer Fund for the construction of that sanitary sewer line on M24.
I move to approve the allocation of approximately $750,000 from the Oxford Township Sewer Fund for the construction of a sanitary sewer line on M24 Highway from approximately Gateway Drive to Oakdale Road.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments?
Yeah.
Questions? Yes.
Question. Um, what's the balance in the fund balance, uh, for the sewer fund?
The sewer, currently, one point, our cash, our cash in the sewers, 2.7 million.
Okay.
We got reserves, 975 at accounting, so we got about 3.7.
Okay.
Million.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Uh, Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Curtis, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee Nichols?
Yes.
And Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Move on to the East Drainer Road engineering design fees. Get a quick, uh, reason why we wanna do this, Jim, for not only somebody on the council, on the, the board and the people in the TV audience.
Oh, you know, I'd like to make a comment too.
Why we're doing this.
Oh, okay. Am I going first?
Who's going first, me or him? Who's on first?
Me.
Board member.
Me, me's up.
Okay. Um, the Water and Sewer Committee is working on looping several sections of the water main in order to increase the reliability of the water main system for the Oxford Township water customers. Back in about 2005, they bonded this project out in order to save about six to, five to six million dollars in bond. Some of this area wasn't completed. So creatively, we have been moving to connect these loops. We did one on Manitou just recently. Now we're doing this one behind or over crossroads for youth and down, it's at the Tullamore start of that subdivision. When that subdivision starts, which it is already, they will put our line to the end of their property. And what we would like to do is for when 2020, they run the new construction on M24, we'd like, we're gonna run the water main under the road while the road's tore up and get it to the eastern side of M24. Once it's to the eastern side of M24, we're asking tonight for $53,850 to design this portion of the water main from the western side of Tullamore property to the eastern side of M24 where the water main will be.
What?
I don't got anything else to say.
Took care of what everything.
I move to authorize Sharp Engineering to design the water main line on East Drainer Road from M24 Highway to the proposed Woods of Tullamore subdivision. That costs $53,850. This $53,850 amount to be expensed to Water Fund account, 591-538-972.000, water line extensions.
Second.
It's moved and seconded, nice job, Jack.
I like, he does a great job for us, I thought it helped him.
Roll call.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
And Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
I'll chime in on one thing, that is just for the design aspect of it, it's kind of like a shovel-ready, we're not quite sure when the project's gonna, probably won't happen next year, just because of the 2020 MDOT project, it'd be bad to rip up Drainer Road, since that's the detour, so it might be like, it might be a 2021 project, but we'll be back to you once we get all the bids in.
Okay, on to the Oakland McComb Intercepter Drainage District, OMID bond.
You know that one, Bill? OMID is the Oakland McComb Intercepter Drain. We are being cost assessment for repairs to this, and improvements to that drain in 2019 of, we are not being assessed, they are doing 11,920,000 repairs. The estimated cost to Oxford Township is $149,616. Oxford Township has the option to prepay this total bond cost or make installment payments. At the Water Sewer Committee, we investigated which would be the best way to do it, Curtis talked to Paul Stotter, and it was agreed that we should pay upfront, right off the bat, $149,616 in total, rather than taking bond out to pay it.
I move to approve the resolution approving prepayment of the Oakland McComb Intercepter Drainage District Series 2019 bond, in the estimated amount of $149,616 to expense to the Sewer Fund, account number 590-527-991-1000, principal payment. I authorize Supervisor William Dunn to deliver a certified copy of the resolution, Oakland County Water Resources Commissioner.
Second.
Seconded for discussion. Anybody wanna discuss it?
No.
The money's due, the money's due by December 1st.
Jim?
Kurt, if you wanna scroll down through there, look for the installment payments.
Okay. For the savings.
I don't think that this is gonna be an issue.
Seven thousand dollars?
Right there. Yeah, scroll up just a little bit, I believe. I believe that your amount, just so you're aware, I mean, you approved the, you're looking to approve the 149, I think since you're prepaying, the amount's only gonna be the 148, 61856 at the top. The 149 is if you did the bonding. So you're good with the number that you're approving, it might be a little bit less, though, when you write that, when you write that check to the county.
It's always less.
Do we, do we know if that, this rate's locked in? As far as, right now, it's stated as estimated?
The 148, 618, or the 149, whatever they're showing. Yeah, that's, that's the resolution that the Township, or that the WRC sent over to you. So it might be just slightly less.
Plus or minus.
Plus, if it's more, we may be coming back to approve the difference.
It won't be higher. It won't be higher, I think it's gonna be the 148 number, so.
Yeah, the 149.
Be like 90 bucks less.
We're approved for enough to pay either or.
Bingo.
And this is, this is a small one, just to prepare you, this is the small one, over the next few years, there's gonna be another 88 million bucks estimated, that's gonna be coming forward that you may have to bond those, because that's gonna be considerably more money.
Okay, roll call.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Back on to more health insurance funding.
I move that the Charter Township of Oxford exercise the opt-out provision, which allows the local unit of government, the Charter Township of Oxford, to determine the contribution amount for healthcare insurance coverage for the 2019 to 2020 planning year.
Moved.
Second.
Supported. Roll call.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
And Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
On to the health insurance renewal.
Clerk Wright? Yes, sorry.
This is the, just a renewal of the same coverage as we have, there's no changes in there, but in the motion, you'll see December 1, 18, that should be December 1, 2019, in the first paragraph.
I move that the Oxford, that Oxford Township renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance for Group 007011799, Division 000, Oxford Fire Department, and Group 007011799, Division 002, Oxford Township employees. The Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue HRA PPO Platinum 1500 Plan effective December 1, that should be 2019, 2019?
That's good, it's the last.
2019. And authorize Barron's Hendrickson Street to forward the appropriate paperwork to Blue Cross Blue Shield to activate the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue PPO Platinum 1500 Plan. All members enrolled on the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue HR PPO Platinum 1500 Plan shall contribute 5% of the premium cost effective December 1, 2019.
Support.
Nope, because there's more to it. Also, the Charter Township of Oxford shall fund a health reimbursement arrangement, 213D Plan, account effective January 1, 2020, cover any additional expenses incurred, including but not limited to deductibles, co-insurance, emergency room visits, and prescription drugs. Further, Oxford Township shall renew the Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance for Group 007011799, Division 001, Oxford Police Retirees, Group 007011799, Division 003, Oxford Township Fire Police Retiree, the Blue Cross Blue Shield Community Blue PPO Platinum 250 Plan, effective December 1, 2019.
Good.
Moved?
Support.
Moved and supported, anybody wanna go over this again? Roll call.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Now, Joe, take it over.
I move to approve the 2019...
Joe, would you wanna tell everybody what this basically?
Basically, these are all the resolutions that put the specials on the Township winter tax rule, those that have not paid.
Special assessments.
Or those that are assessed. I move to approve the 2019 delinquent water resolution, as presented, the amount of $58,971.49, authorized to be placed in the 2019 winter tax rule.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
And Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2019 delinquent water 5% administrative fee resolution, as presented, the amount of $2,0948.57, authorized to be placed in the 2019 winter tax rule.
I can, moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is this vocal? Or do I use a noise?
It's a good, it's a good...
Chair's option.
Perfect, then we're good. I move to approve the 2019 delinquent drains and lake levels resolution, as presented, the amount of $38,667.93, authorized to be placed in the 2019 winter tax rule.
Moved and seconded. You know what, I think I'm gonna do a roll call, because it'll never hurt, I'd hate to have to go through this again.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
So the one before that, Kelly, no date that is a roll call.
We can't do that.
Okay, do the one again.
A redo.
Okay, I move to approve the 2019 delinquent water 5% administrative fee resolution, as presented, the amount of $2,0948.57, authorized to be placed in the 2019 winter tax rule.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
And Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2019 delinquent Indian Wood Lake Level Resolution, as presented, the amount of $1,031.44, and authorize it to be placed on the 2019 winter tax rule.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, excuse me, roll call.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2019 installment of weed control for Squaw Lake Canal Resolution, as presented, the amount of $2,887, and authorize it to be placed on the 2019 winter tax rule.
Support.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
And Trusty Payne?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2019 installment of weed control for Clear Lake and Squaw Lake Resolution, as presented, the amount of $16,656.40, and authorize it to be placed on the 2019 winter tax rule.
Support.
Moved and supported, roll call.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
And Trusty Payne?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2019 installment of weed control for Lake Mickelson Resolution, as presented, in the amount of $20,350, and authorize it to be placed on the 2019 winter tax rule.
Support.
Moved and seconded, supported, roll call.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
And Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
On to roll, Jack, go. Okay. I move to approve the 2019 installment of weed control for Cedar Lake, Long Lake, and Tan Lake Resolution, as presented, in the amount of $30,850.16, and authorize it to be placed on the 2019 winter tax rule.
Support.
Moved and supported, roll call.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2019 delinquent sewer resolution, as presented, in the amount of $92,890.28, and authorize it to be placed on the 2019 winter tax rule.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Clerk Wright, yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
And Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2019 delinquent roads resolution, as presented, the amount of $1,880.30, and authorize it to be placed on the 2019 winter tax rules.
Support.
Moved and supported, I fell asleep there for a second. Uh, roll call.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
I move to approve the 2019 Elkview Estate Special Assessment District Resolution, as presented, in the amount of $10,224.88, and authorize it to be placed on the 2019 winter tax rule.
Support.
Moved and supported, roll call.
Trusty Curtis?
Yes.
Trusty Payne?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. And Trusty Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you, board members. They will be loaded.
Okay, let's move on to the annual permit for work on the state highway right-of-way, it's simply a motion to have me sign the document.
I move to authorize Supervisor William Dunn to apply for the 2020 annual permit for work on state highway right-of-way on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford, and to approve the performance resolution for governmental agencies.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Halloween trick-or-treat hours, Clerk Wright?
I'll move to set the Halloween trick-or-treat hours for Oxford Township from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM on Thursday, October 31, 2019.
Support.
Been moved and supported, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public comment? Any public, any public comment?
12:20, East Davidson Lake Road, we came a little late, but you had some 67A zoning amendments, has anything changed from what was recently sent out?
No. Come on up, state your name and...
Just, regarding the liability insurance, is the township covered under our president, our president liability insurance, if we take on the Brownfield grant?
What is Brownfield?
It's contaminated property, lead-contaminated property on Barber Road, that the township wants to apply for a grant for.
The township has not stated they want to apply for a grant for it.
It was said last, that was said last month.
The applicant, this, I'm not, I'm not gonna get into discussion, because I'm not gonna add an agenda item, but it was never determined by the township to apply for this grant. There was an application sent in by the House of Providence.
No, the House of Providence cannot apply for it, the township did, and we...
But the, the application was theirs, the town, we have not made any declarations on that.
We all have proof of it, we have it. And then, is everybody on the township board aware of that Gary Rentrapp has told, sent emails to three people on this township board, that he said it's not a township issue, it's a private residence issue, is everybody aware of that?
Yeah.
It's not gonna be an agenda item, is that a statement?
That's a statement, I have a copy of that, it was sent to you, Curtis Wright, and Joe Ferrari, Ferrari, last week, and he said not to pursue it. It is a private, it is a, for the private residence.
I'm, I'm gonna end this this way, there's more to it than that, and we are looking into it, yeah.
Well, there's more to it than this, because you're lying up there, you put it in the paper.
We're not lying, I'm not, I've heard enough.
You put it in the newspaper.
I've heard enough.
Saying you're backing it. And that night in the meeting, you said you knew nothing.
We're not backing anything yet.
Okay, well, then you better talk to the person who filled out the paperwork, because your name's on the top of it.
Are you through with your statement?
I'm through with it, you're a liar, Mr. Dunn, and I, we all have proof of it, the whole township done.
You haven't been able to prove anything yet.
Read the paper.
I've had enough, I've heard enough.
I've had enough of you two. You should go to jail for what you tell Mr. Dunn.
Whatever.
You're gonna...
Please get your facts together.
I have my facts together, I have a copy of it.
Let's do, let's, let's...
Curtis Wright has, so does Joe Ferrari. Would you like to see the, would you like to see what it says?
Commissioners comment?
Yeah, I have three. Uh, one, the Beaumont Hospital, I'm gonna give you an update on it. While they were denied for their certificate of need, it was denied for the same reason that the state said that we had a need. So I've contacted Beaumont, Beaumont is going to appeal, they will have their appeal in, and they're gonna put full court press on it. Since, we've contacted State Rep. John Riley, in fact, we called him today, we had a meeting on the phone, and I filed a complaint with Senator Baer's office, and I filed a complaint with the Office of Gret and Whitner, Whitner, I slipped that on Friday, didn't I? We are, they are moving forward. We don't work for Beaumont, Beaumont came to the state's request for a need to be filled, they filled it out, we're working on it with them, and all of a sudden, somebody just pulled the rug out from under it. Secondly, I know that employee evaluations have to be done by October 18th, so that we can perform the, Margie and I have been tasked with that, and then, I wanna talk a little bit about what recently happened.